Good evening, everybody. Welcome. It's March third. This is the Newburgh City Council meeting. I call this meeting to order. Can we have a roll call, please?
Certainly. Counselor McBride?
Here.
Counselor Wheatley?
Here.
Counselor Yarnell Holloman?
Here.
Counselor Kilburg?
Here.
Mayor Rosacker?
Here.
Counselor Turgensen?
Here.
And Counselor Carmen is absent.
Thank you. Would you all, uh, join me for the, uh, Pledge of Allegiance, please? Well, the first item on our agenda is Will's favorite part. City Manager Report.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and Counsel. This is the listing of events for February of 2025. In engineering, Heller has submitted the ninety percent plans for the water basin covering, uh, project, and we had been debating vigorously with Oregon Health Authority about the materials that needed to be used, and we found out we won that debate. So we were able to use a slightly less expensive plastic in the basin covers than they were pushing us towards. The water treatment plant sighting study draft geotechnical report is under review, and actually, you've received an update since this slide was written, and the geotechnical report was sent out to council, and it discovered that there is no liquefiable soils at the new site. Site B, as we consider where we might build the water treatment plant, that is an extremely good piece of news. There could be between five and seven million dollars of future savings because of building at a site that's not got any liquefiable soil. So I'm glad we switched direction. The PLC project is ninety-nine percent finished, only a little bit of work to go to get that done, and the Wainuski Storm Outfall Project is completed and considerably under budget. In finance, the W twos and ten ninety-nines were issued in January, as were many of the other documents. There was a Department of Revenue Annual Budget Training Session that was attended by staff. Open GOV implementation for the new building and planning permit software is well underway, and I've been assured that it will be coming live in March. And of course, as Katie says, budget, budget, and more budget. In HR, there was coordination with Emily to put on a luncheon learn to learn about the joys and the pitfalls of artificial intelligence, which we currently do not officially use in the city, and we are looking at whether we have to put together an AI policy, the first of its type, in the near future. We attended a webinar on compensation law and pay equity, explored new training software tailored towards public work staff, so that's in-the-field, blue-collar training, and HR received nearly two hundred applications across five positions. People want to work here. In IT, we began working on deploying schedules for the laptops and other devices as we are being forced to move to Windows eleven, as you know. We worked with Public Works on access control to come up with other options to secure sites, and expanded the access control system, and rolled out that first test batch of those Windows eleven-based virtual desktops. And as you've heard before, this isn't something we particularly want to do. We're quite happy with Windows ten, but they're no longer supporting many key features of the platform, so they're moving us on. Public Works in general, uh, we finalized and submitted the annual solid waste recycling report for Yamhill County and DEQ, distributed free emergency training opportunities, prepared a boil water notice for a water line break on two seventeen twenty-five. Maintenance work, you can see some of the recent statistics for things that we did, as well as having to deal with that water line break. And here are some more things that we did. Miles of debris swept, some water meters exercised, services activated, and fleet equipment repairs. And here's the eight hundred North Meridian Street Water Service install that we did recently, and a live water service tap at one seventy East Third Street. And when you see the statistics report every month, these would each represent one job amongst those sort of cluster of jobs that we do. And of course, my household, as well as twelve hundred others, was hit with a power outage when this tree came down and ripped out some lines, and it was over in one five five nine East Second Street. I drive actually under this tree, or I used to, every day. So I'm just very glad that nobody was actually under that when it came down, and nobody was injured or hurt. We, in wastewater operations, fixed some leaks, repaired some failed O-rings, replaced filters on top of the fuel bin, took apart and cleaned bin vent equipment, welcomed Anthony Tony Dante to fill our vacant operator one position, and I've met with him. I think he's going to prove to be an excellent addition to our team. And of course, the programmable logic controller replacement for our plant control cutover took place. In, in water, we replaced a level indicator in North Valley Reservoir, added twelve thousand pounds of media to the water filters, which is something that we do all the time, cleaned the north settling basin flow meter, completed annual state and federal required discharge reports, and programmed a new cellular-based autodialer to configure the old dialer to run as a backup. So that's another infrastructure electronic upgrade. Now over to that water line break at Jake with Park Estate. It occurred Monday, February seventeenth at about eleven AM. It was a thirty-four-year-old eight-inch main line. The top had blown off due to corroded bolts below grade. Public messaging and repairs began immediately. Bottled water was delivered immediately. The services were restored at nine PM that night. But of course, whenever the system is compromised, it does lead to a boil water notice period because there may be some backflow into the system, and that continued until Wednesday, February nineteenth, when we received negative samples for any bacteria in the system. The corroded bolts on adjacent valves were replaced, but maintenance will be going on and po- holding some other valves in the immediate area to replace any bolts as necessary. And this is really just one of these things that will happen from time to time when you have very aged infrastructure. Obviously, when we tell our friends in the development community that this is why we have to have system development money in order to pay for infrastructure, this is the sort of thing that we have to deal with when we need to replace those pipes. And here are some pictures, pictures that came out of that water line break. We also had a snow event, and we sanded the designated priority emergency routes. This was on the eleventh and the early morning of the twelfth. One of the multi-function equipment PCs that we use is pictured here, getting rid of some of the ice. The vent track has multiple attachments, and this broom is used during snow events. And over to public safety, congratulations to Madison, who is now officially on solo status in dispatch. Our officers delivered over a hundred and fifty meals to seniors on February thirteenth, part of the tradition that our department does every year. And thank you to its party time catering for organizing this event. SRO, that's School Resource Officer Appreciation Work, occurred. The SRO position is even more unique as the front row seat becomes so necessary with the daily lives of our community's youth. Our SROs get a chance to mentor and to educate and to lead by example. They get to see your kids laugh, cry, struggle, and succeed. And way to go, Madison. Well done. And here are our two SROs. In community development, a one-hundred lot planning unit subdivision on North Springbrook Road was approved by Planning Commission with an appeal deadline passed now of February twenty-seventh. Code maintenance package was approved by council. Thank you for helping us keep on top of all of those updates. And a design review application was submitted for the redevelopment of the former Round Table site for a new restaurant, and I believe it is going to be a Hawaiian restaurant, I believe. City Recorder Events, the website launched and is working well. First Friday open house saw a hundred residents touring the building. I did six tours, and it was really cool, taking people behind the scenes around City Hall and explaining what we do. The collaboration with IT has happened on a new email retention plan, and that's going to be coming forward soon. And we have begun the work, begun, on updating council rules, and the council will be seeing many visits from Rachel as we start to work through potential new council rules. So more to come on that. So that is the deal for this busy month, snow event, an unpleasant water break, but we stayed on top of it. And as usual, we got things moving very quickly. Are there any questions?
Um, can you explain a little bit, a little more about the boil water event? How do you notify people? How do you know who to notify? Can you explain that?
So when we have an, when we have a break, we know all the homes that are downstream of that event, so we know the impacted area directly. And that's one of the reasons why we have a water master plan and a storm water master plan, and that's why we have those diagrams which show all the houses that are in each area. We have to know that. So when we have an event like this, we just automatically assume that everything that is in the stream is contaminated. So door-to-door messaging happens, public electronic communications happen as well, so it's old school and new school. And actually, I'm going to pivot to Russ because I only know the generalities, and Russ can probably say a bit more about this one.
Yeah, this happened in Jake with Park Estates, which has one water line that goes into the estates. And when we, we had to cut the pipe to install the new valve to replace the other one that the top had come off of. And when you do water a pipe, it allows for the potential of groundwater or anything else to get into it. So once they got it repaired, we flush it, uh, they flushed it for about an hour. We did about five water exchanges in that pipe. Then we take a sample. They went door-to-door, notified all the residents door-to-door. Uh, we took the sample, uh, it was about midnight, uh, when we got it to the lab, and it takes twenty-four hours for the lab to do the tests on it to ensure that there's no bacteria in it, which it came back fine. And then we notified them all that, that we're lifting the boil water notice. We also have to notify Oregon Emergency Response, ORMS. Uh, we notified them. We notified the duty person for the State Health Department as well, so that they're aware of it. And we also notified them when we lifted the boil water notice.
Thank you.
This isn't a question, but just more of a statement. I just wanted to say, I had to, I wanted to say at last council meeting, but I didn't, and I just wanted to say thank you to this council and, um, also to, um, Captain Ferguson and team, um, for, my husband passed away last month unexpectedly, and, um, I just wanted to say specifically thank you to the officers that responded. And no one wants to be in that position. Um, I was not in the state, and, um, Officer Moreland as well has really taken care of my family and my kid at school, and, um, and thank you to Bill as well for just being a really good friend to me and showing up. So, um, thank you to everyone, and Will, you too. And I couldn't be more thankful for this community, so, thanks.
Thank you, Will. So next we move into, uh, public comments. And the first person on our list is our Waste Management, Dave Huber. Welcome, Sers.
Thank you, Mayor Rosacker, city council members, city staff. My name is Dave Huber. I am the Senior Public Sector Manager for Waste Management, and with me tonight, I have my colleague,
Jason Willie, District Manager for Newburgh, Newburgh Operations.
So tonight, uh, this is really short and sweet, but we have some great news to share, uh, with all of you. We continue to look way, look for ways to improve, uh, in particular with our customer service here in the community. Uh, as most of you know, our office on Wainuski Road has been closed for quite some time to the public, and, uh, we are about to change that and make it easier for our citizens here at Newburgh. So the great news this evening is effective this month, in fact, effective this week. Correct me if I'm wrong, Jason. Our local office will officially be open to the public, so customers within our community can come in and ask questions. Uh, any service-related questions to the collection side of the business, uh, the routes, transfer station questions regarding, you know, what's acceptable, what's not acceptable, the transfer station facility, if there's any questions on recycling. You can ask any questions you like, but, uh, this, uh, uh, person that we've hired, uh, Jason, you can speak to, uh, maybe, uh, a little bit about who, who we have there at the office.
So today was Demary's first day with Newburgh Hauling. She's a ten-year employee with WM. She actually started out in customer service, went to our dispatch center, went to sales, now making a leap back into the customer service side of stuff. It's been with us ten years. I think it's going to be a great addition to the Newburgh team, and I'm excited to get things rolling. As Dave said, we're going to open the doors, officially, we're going to open the doors next Monday. We're going to start out with office hours of twelve to five, and if we see we need to expand those hours, we will. It'll be Monday through Friday. And, uh, at this time, we currently do not have a direct line to Demary. We're still pushing for that. But, uh, if anybody has any questions, like Dave said, go ahead and come on into the office and step in, and Demary can pretty much answer about every question you possibly could have.
So you might recall, uh, last year, we were in front of City Council U, uh, with our annual detailed cost reports, which we do every year. Uh, and this was the one key takeaway that we clearly, clearly heard from, uh, everyone as, as a need. And, uh, so wanted to make sure that, uh, everybody knew we listened and we're finally taking action there, so. Uh, finally, we just want to thank you for, for the feedback. Uh, last year, as we continued to look for opportunities to better serve our customers in the community here at Newburgh, on behalf of all of the Waste Management employees that service the community here in Newburgh, uh, we thank you for allowing us to provide the service that we do each and every day.
I would, uh, I get emails and phone calls on a fairly regular basis about this situation. And so as a representative of the citizens, I would like to say to you, thank you very much for hearing us and, uh, implementing these changes. I hope that, uh, I, I hope it works out great for both of us. Thank you. Nobody's going to ask any questions. They're afraid if they ask you, that, that the prices will go up again, so. So next we have on the list, uh, Mark Wilkatz. All right, let Chandler, you can come up together for all of us, if, if you like. Welcome. Good to see you.
I'm Chandler, and I'm, uh, Chandler Wilkatz, and I'm a real estate agent, uh, working with the potential buyer for the, uh, Burst Street Lot or the Butler Property or the Mouse Lot, whatever we're calling it these days. So, uh, we have that offer out, and I just wanted to come here and see if you guys had any questions, if I could be of any help.
Of course, nobody on the council has actually seen the, uh, the offer. Uh, we do know that the city manager has received it, and we've all, I think we've all, Mike, if you've had a discussion with him. Uh, okay. Well, then, most of us have already said, please proceed, uh, to the best of your ability and knowledge. So, uh, please, we're going to say to the city manager, thank you very much for the, uh, for the offer.
Is there any, uh, timeframe on a response to it, or?
Will, your best to answer that question.
So actually, there's only one counselor who hasn't given me that affirmative feedback yet, but I'm certain that that's going to come perhaps as early as tomorrow. And then we will be proceeding to follow up with the steps. And we have an agent, and of course, James will be involved as well, the city attorney. But, but we will expect to be reaching back out very soon.
Okay. Thank you.
We're not, we're not slow.
Thank you.
You know, we work at, at the speed of government. All right. Next on our agenda is a, uh, of the consent calendar. So the, uh, resolution to authorize and grind an inlay. I trust that everybody's read it. Um, is there any objection to moving forward with the, uh, consent agreement? If not, then could somebody make a motion?
I move we approve the consent calendar.
Second?
All right, it has been moved and seconded that we, uh, approve the consent agenda item. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. So now is a public hearing, and this is, uh, this is going to be the first reading of this, so without all the formalities. And who's, there we go. Good to see you tonight.
Good evening, council and mayor. Uh, my name is Dan Coiler. I'm the accounting manager in the Finance Department here. A lot of you have seen me, uh, each year for the past many years, uh, presenting the annual, uh, fee updates. Um, this is, this update in particular, I believe, is the ninth iteration of the fee update since we created the Master Fee Schedule, uh, back in two thousand sixteen. It wa, the Master Fee Schedule was created as, uh, uh, an effort to get Newburgh into the best practices of kind of, uh, providing a one-stop shop for, um, to aggregate all of our fees into one spot so that, uh, citizens had a tool to, uh, to use for just about anything that they, uh, for just about any fee that they were looking for. Um, this fee, or this, uh, update in particular is, includes, um, the re-establishment of the debt permit, uh, the demolition permit fee, and an addition of, uh, grant writing services fee, as well as, uh, other, uh, various smaller, um, increases or adjustments to fees. Uh, on the request for council action, you'll see a, a highlight of fee changes. Um, the, the city attorney research rate within the public records request has been adjusted from three hundred dollars per hour to four hundred and four dollars per hour, uh, to act, to more accurately reflect the cost of, um, those legal fees included in, uh, public records requests. Uh, I believe not all record, public records requests, uh, require, uh, attorney, um, required out, um, the involvement of outside counsel, so not every records request is going to include that portion of, uh, that particular fee. Um, but essentially, it's been adjusted to match the, uh, the cost of junior partner, which is, um, usually, usually who does such a review. Uh, there's also within the city, within the city recorder and administrative fee section, we're adding, uh, proposing to add a new fee, uh, which gives, uh, a new opportunity to citizens and, uh, organizations in town to receive grant white, grant writing services, uh, and, um, assistance. Uh, basically, the city's digital archivist and grant writer, uh, which is a fairly new position, uh, is given, uh, will be available to provide such professional assistance, uh, such as application writing and editing, identification of grantors, creation of project one, one-pagers, navigation of federal grant reporting requirements, uh, and, and other similar, uh, grant-related services. Uh, the rate for, the, the rate is set within the Master Fee Schedule at fifty dollars per hour, which is the approximate loaded rate for that individual's time. Uh, finance has, um, since the last fee schedule update, we've updated, um, for, we've up, I've updated the, um, municipal services statement fees, which are not updated through this process, but through the Citizen Rate Review Committee. Those changed back in January. Um, but you'll see the, the rates for two thousand, or for twenty twenty-five, uh, listed in this, in this update. Um, the library has one, uh, one fee that's changing. Uh, they're, they're adjusting their interlibrary loan policy, which I actually just learned about. Uh, it's a program that they have for, uh, for people to rent books that are outside of our, that aren't available within our system. And the, basically, it's, the, the new fee is going to be five dollars per loan, uh, beyond, after twelve, after they've done, done twelve times, which I believe, uh, if I recall my conversation, isn't a whole lot of people, but some of those avid, uh, some of those avid readers that, um, are looking for hard-to-find books. Uh, that, that change is sort of an attempt to reflect the cost of mailing, uh, because essentially, when they need, when they need to get a book from outside the system, they send it through, uh, postal mail. Um, the permit center, uh, most of their fees are attached by, through the resolutions and ordinances that installed them, uh, to require annual updates, uh, by index of the CPIU, um, which in this, this year was two point nine percent. Um, with the exception of one, which is the parking fee in lieu of parking rate, which I don't believe has been used yet. It's kind of available, uh, should that, um, should it be needed. But that one is set statutorily to, um, to use the, to use the Engineering News Record Construction Cost Index for Seattle, uh, for December, which was four point five percent, I believe. Yeah. Um, last year, you recall, we removed the demolition permit fee, uh, and that was, uh, as a result of, uh, the Building Department realizing that it, it really, the demolition permits really were not in there, um, range of services. Uh, but, but a, after removing it, we real, the engineer, uh, Engineering Department realized that they still, they still need that, uh, fee in place, uh, largely for reporting and, or that, they need that permit in place largely for, um, reporting and, uh, tracking purposes. Um, so we've, we're bringing it back in at the same, um, basically, at the updated rate that it was, which is a general, which is set at kind of a, a general inspection permit rate of a hundred dollar, a hundred and eight dollars and twenty-two cents. Um, and that's, and that, uh, is going to be found now at the, in the engineering section rather than the, uh, building section where it once was. Uh, finally, the business license and permit fees were reorganized a bit. Um, I was working with the business license, uh, uh, employee, and basically, she had, I think, received some feedback that it would help to have, to kind of segregate it into its own section, and that, and then I think with the, uh, incoming of a new Communications Development Director, I suspect, uh, they realized there was one fee, uh, that was, that was technically should have been included, which is the temporary merchant business license fee. Um, it was, it's in the code. He noted that it was in the code, but it was, it'd never been observed. Uh, and so there, we kind of added that, added that in there to kind of, uh, round out that section. Uh, there's no changes in police fees and no changes in public works fees this, uh, this time. Those, those fees along with the library and city recorder are kind of updated as needed to reflect changes in costs or just keeping up with the times, uh, but we have none for the, no changes for those. Uh, and that, that's pretty much it. Uh, and I can take any questions if anyone has any.
Dan, I think you've been very efficient. We, we, uh, it doesn't look like anybody has any questions.
Not too fast?
No.
My watch tells me I'm stressed. Excellent.
Oh, Mike.
I'll try not to stress it.
No, I'm joking.
So overall is it, is it more, is it like at the two point nine percent overall increase or? Cause I see you do have some, unless I missed it someplace, you do have some percentages that it changed like last year. So it was just, it does it go from December on up to December of this year, or are we looking at starting again?
Yeah, it, uh each year, it's, each year it's different, uh there's usual, you know, in my first handful of years here back in uh, you know, twenty seventeen to twenty twenty, it was usually steady around two point nine percent, give or take a bit. Uh, and obviously it, it went a little weird during uh following COVID and um and inflationary errors, but uh it's kind of, I've noted it in the last, this year and last year, it's finally kind of leveled out. Um, so I think traditionally, I, I would, you know, I think two point nine percent is about what I expected, but yeah, it's a CPIU uh as of December of twenty twenty four.
Just think, one thing I did want to mention, and it is a very tiny subset of public information requests where we would append the legal charge for that, that's only if it's something that we've need to gain an opinion. Are, are we allowed to release that type of private information, in which case we have to have the sterling work of Miller Nash to make sure we don't release something that may violate a law and some, some other law in some way, so very infrequently.
Actually, can I jump in on that? Sorry to correct you, boss, but however, we are not actually allowed to charge for legal opinions on whether or not we're allowed to release something. But we do charge for things like redactions um and thorough review of, of items, sorry Will, just wanted to make sure that was on the record.
So um, can we negotiate this, James, you know, and maybe get it down a little bit, I'm not, just kidding.
So if there's no more questions, would somebody like to make a motion?
Um, I move, we adopt resolution number twenty twenty.
We're not making a motion on this one tonight, sorry.
Oh, what is the motion, what?
None, oh.
I, I left out the part that, uh I'll be back next council meeting to officially hear your motion.
Well, we hate to stress you out again, we were, but we have no choice, so.
Well, thank you for your time.
Thank you. So the last item on our agenda is our sister city discussion, Rachel is gonna update us on this.
Good evening, uh I'm Rachel Thomas, your city recorder, as you all know. Uh, here to just chat with you about our sister city relationships and how we want to proceed with those. Um, I'm gonna start this off by, nothing you say will offend me or upset me, I have no dog in this fight. But I do need direction from council on how we want to proceed with our sister city relationships. Um, so I'm gonna give you a little bit of history, if you've read it, you've heard a lot of this, but I want to make sure that everyone hears what we're talking about. Talk about what they can look like and then I'd love to hear from you guys, so. Remember which button I'm pressing here. So we have two sister cities in Newburgh, one is Asago City, Japan, which used to be Wadayama and Asago, and they merged several years ago. Um, and the other is Poisdorf, Austria. The Asago city, sister city relationship was established in two thousand, so it's um just about twenty five years old now. And it comes from the Wadayama Middle School Exchange Program, which is over forty years old. So we've had middle schoolers from our um Mountain View or Shalane Valley, Shalane Valley Middle School and um Wadayama have been exchanging every year um with only a few years off in, for over forty years. So the goals of this relationship, again, have been exchange of information, um sharing our culture and it particularly calls out sports. Um, problem solving experiences, so this is sharing common issues we deal with and how these might uh change. And the development of all the uh relationships between these cities and our um, our local economies. And the current status of this is that they're continuing to do these yearly exchanges. They paused for several years during COVID and last year we were able to bring it back. Uh, we had a group of students come here from Asago and we sent a good group back, um. We supported it this last year by sponsoring a lunch and a meet and greet. And um, schools have asked us to consider student sponsorship in the future, so helping pay for students to go. There is no adult exchange, so we are not sending adult delegates over there. Um, we could potential, except for a few teachers who go with the students, we're not sending people from the city or just other adult um residents of the city. And there's no supporting community organization other than the middle school. And what I mean by this is a lot of sister cities have a, a separate organization from the city and other things that supports the sister city relationship. So this is a little, it could be a group, it doesn't even have to be a formal nonprofit, though that's helpful for raising funds. Um, and they arrange the relationships and continue dialogue and kind of support the exchanges and um the conversation. So there isn't an actual organization doing this in the city other than the school district doing their middle school exchange, which is all that they do. Poisdorf, you guys, uh most of you met them last year, we had a contingent from Poisdorf come visit us, this is them in the official Pacer car from the um uh St. Paul Rodeo Parade on the fourth of July. Um, they had a great time attending that day. Um, yeah, you got a few of you were there, we had a good day. Uh, it was established in two thousand six, so it's a little newer, about nineteen years. Um, and it was suggested by some local residents, so uh uh Wal Trout and Lynn, wait, uh Lynn, who is the owner of Windrose, um came up with the idea of forming this sister city relationship. Uh, Wal Trout is from Austria and she saw the, the, the similarities between Newburgh and Poisdorf and thought it would be a really good match. Um, we do match a lot with the wine industry, but luckily not competing wines. They have uh some white wines that we do not have in this area and we've got those lovely Pinot Noirs and Chardonnays from this area that they don't have in Poisdorf, so that's a big part of our relationship. Their goals are listed here, big thing is that uh exchange, we've had an annual or biannual exchange every two years. Either they come here or we go there, and that's been going on since two thousand six. Um, and a big thing for them was development of friendships between the people of both cities. They really want friendships across multiple generations and they've talked about that when they visited as well. The current status is the biannual visits are continuing. They were just here and they have recently reached out and said that they are starting to plan for us to come next year. Um, there has been some wonderful developments in the wine industry, Adelshine Vineyards has been working with one of their vineyards and they've helped them get their wines in the United States, which is really exciting. Um, they're expecting us to visit next year, um but the sister city organization, there is one for this has had some leadership changes, so the two women who have been heading it off have both expressed that they don't want to lead it anymore and they're both retiring. Um, very well deserved, after leading this for almost twenty years, they're ready to step down. Um, but new leadership has not really emerged, there's been some interest and there are some people who've expressed interest. But it's kind of an ecstatic place, um. So there's some definite challenges that these are facing right now, there's a lack of organizers from among the citizens of the city. There, there are people who've expressed vague interest in both sister city relationships, but not a lot of people have had the capacity to stand up and actually do the work of arranging these visits, it's a lot of work to arrange a group visit and try, group travel to another country. Um, city staff are limited, you know, my department is small, there's three of us, including our public information officer, myself and our records coordinator. We uh are busy helping you guys out all the time, we can do this work, but we are limited on what we can put into it. And it's also involved a budget commitment, I'll jump into that here, I believe that's my next slide. For the last visit that we hosted, so this is Poisdorf residents coming here. The city's portion, and this is only the city's portion, the sister city organization put in funds as well. The city's portion was eight thousand dollars for their visit here. Um, we helped cover some of their costs, we also sponsored some meals and some different events and it was very expensive. Travel to Poisdorf is anywhere between three and five thousand dollars, it can be more or less. So if we are visiting there, each person who travels is going to be spending that much and you've got to consider um, though counselors have paid for themselves, staff, if a staff member is asked to travel, that comes out of the city budget. So um, and I know that hasn't always been the, the tradition, but that's, that's what happens when you send someone on a business trip. Um, Asago City, our last visit did not cost us as much money, we had a beautiful meal at Gem One Hundred, which was not very expensive, the students loved. Um, and one, one uh, you know, pastries and coffee event, so it was not very expensive. But it's definitely out of balance with what we spent on Poisdorf. And travel to visit Asago City is again between three and probably five thousand dollars, um depending on what happens and how long someone were to visit. Um, and again, the uh, the teachers at the middle school have asked that we think about um sponsoring students who go or finding some way to assist with those costs. Um, so that's something that we're gonna need to consider. So generally, uh there's a lot of benefits of doing a healthy sister city relationship and there are opportunities throughout the country where we can show absolutely beautiful um relationships and how it has benefited a town. So you can drive tourism through visits back and forth, there's educational exchange opportunities such as what we're experiencing with Wadayama right now. Um, international business expansion opportunities such as what we saw with the wine industry, cultural exchange. Um, some cities have, have given significant assistance to their sister cities if there's a major disaster, so earthquakes or floods. They've come in and given money um just to assist each other because there's this, this decision to help each other. Um, and then shared concepts for solving problems, so this is similar to, you know, what we experienced when um our city manager went to Korea and came back with all sorts of great ideas, he, when you're experiencing how they solve problems that we all face in another place, it can be a beneficial thing. So these are some of the benefits that you see from a sister city relationship. But what I need to know from you guys is what do we want for the future of these relationships? Uh, this is a picture from Asago City, actually, uh showing the wisteria, there's beautiful wisteria all over Japan. Um, do you want staff time spent on organizing exchanges and building these relationships, how much? Uh, budget is required to fund the city contributions and exchanges and staff travel. I'd estimate we should put aside ten to fifteen thousand dollars a year for this if we're going to do that. And then what goals do you have for these relationships long term? What do you want to see come out of it, what things should be working towards? I'm happy to do whatever you'd like to see done, but I'd love some, um, some feedback on what council is looking for from our sister city relationships. Thank you.
Well, as far as the uh school student sponsorships, I'm not in favor of and my, my kids went through that, they, they did that exchange and it was a lot of fun. But I, I would not support taxpayer money for sponsoring a few kids, they, the parents can help like I did. They could do fundraisers like our kids did and I, that's something I think the schools, that's in their wheelhouse. I don't, I'm not gonna support any type of taxpayer money for that, as far as the Austria. You know, it seems like this, I would like to have it continue. Um, but I don't think that the staff ought to be spending the time on this. This is something that I think between the, the chamber, Newburgh Downtown Coalition and um Taste of Newburgh, this is right in their wheelhouse, guys, I mean, that's what they're all about. Working collectively, uh, cause this could help, there could be somebody there that wants to branch out um financially with some type of a business deal here, you never know. And, and I think, you know, I, I think if this is something we should continue on it needs to be headed up by those three organizations to work together and um, and I guess if, if they don't, well then I'm willing to let it go for a while. Somebody really has a heartache about it, then they'll rise up, but I, I just don't, I know our staff time is, is stretched, so that's, that's how I feel about it.
I agree with a lot of Mike's comments, I um probably wouldn't be out the gate supportive of um funding student scholarships, but I would be very interested in supporting outside of city council and finding funds for scholarships. Um, in terms of staff time, um I agree, I would like to minimize staff time wherever we can on projects that are not directly I think these are indirect ties to our city goals, but maybe not direct ties, or we, um so I, I would, I would, I would kind of, I would be interested in if there was some way to form like a ad hoc committee to support this with a counselor that's actually taking on the burden of the staff time. Um, I would raise my hand for that, actually, um, but I think that that a counselor that's really passionate about this, I mean, Robin on Taste Newburgh, you know me with Chamber or Andy C, I, I totally agree that this, that the stable table would be a great facilitation of this work, but I do think that it's important to have um a seat at the table, maybe not the leading seat, but a seat at the table for the partnership. And I wouldn't want to destabilize the sister city, I, I would really like to see that both sister city relationships continue. But maybe we broaden, broaden the circle um and ask other organizations to step in and step up to join us in it.
Yeah, I'm pretty much in agreement as well, I think they're nice, kind of cool things to do, but not at taxpayer expense and not um adding to your stress, your workloads at all. If these three organizations and or a nonprofit group um emerges to handle it, that's great. These, I mean, I can't even imagine how much work it is to plan these trips for a dozen people with the food, travel and all those facets of that, so yeah, if we have to let it go, I guess we have to let it go.
Yes, I'll just be one more echoing voice, when I read through this in preparation for tonight, my first thought was, what is the role of the stable table and potentially helping to support? That there is so much collaboration and economic tourism related aspects to this, they felt like maybe really great leading to help support that work. That'll be an extra echo tonight.
I, I personally would uh, I would hate to lose the program altogether. I think there is some value to it and especially the, the Poisdorf uh has some economic incentive as well. That being said, I think the uh, the wine industry group should take a large part of making sure that it continues. Um, you know, the two that are retiring, we, we need to find a replacement outside the city employees and, and continue that program. I just now found out that only one of our two middle schools participates in the exchange program, that's odd. Uh, that's quite a surprise to me, but I think this is the, I think we should keep a small amount of money in our budget so that we can participate at the level that we, we have, especially Poisdorf, uh but it should be fairly minor and that's assuming that city manager is looking at me like I'm spending, I'm spending his money right now. Um, agrees, so uh, I'd like to see him continue, but yes, I, I don't think that we need to put a lot of money into running that, Robin, did you have a comment? Alright, so is that enough direction?
Yes, that's very helpful, thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Well, believe it or not, that's our agenda for today. Yes, I guess that's just, all that's left is meeting adjourned, this might be our uh, our new record for short meeting.